Oh, good interiors.
That's great.
Burgers sandwiches. Maybe lunch.
You roll out your mat.
I keep cutting it. I started out about, I think I'm thinking about your hair. And then I cut a little bit more off. Well, thank you.
Oh, really?
Down here.
No, that's funny. That's kind of weird again. I just think it's funny to cheer you because that typically, some reason tonight is not.
Good evening. Thank you for coming. Tonight is Tuesday, September 29th, 2025. This is our regular scheduled city council meeting at 3:15 South Wrangle Street. So I will call us to order. We do have a quorum. Our first item of agenda will be our invocation tonight will be given by Reverend Patrick Evans. He's the pastor of First Methodist Church. If you'll come forward and then we'll do the pledges. So if you'll stand, please. Thank you, Mr. Patrick.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of this day, for the opportunity to gather as a community. We ask your presence in this meeting, guide our thoughts, our words, our decisions. Bless the members of this council with wisdom that comes from above, with patience to listen, with courage to lead. May every decision tonight be marked by respect, humility, and genuine desire to serve the common good. Lord, we lift up our city, its people, its families, and its businesses. Protect those who serve the public safety, bless the schools, and provide those in need. May the city be a place of peace, justice, and opportunity for all. Grant us unity, even in diverse opinion, and may the work be done here that is honoring to you and blessing to our community. Keep us ever mindful that we are all your children. We ask this in the holy name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Now, for our pledges, first, the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Our next item is a special presentation, Business of the Month, presented by JEDCO Specialist Sherry McDonald to Sherwin-Williams Paint Stores. Who is Sherry?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I want to present Sherwin-Williams with the Business of the Month Award. So let me just call Brett Thompson, the store manager up here. A few years ago, the JEDCO Board established some goals and strategies. And one of the most important goals was to nurture our existing communities. One way we do that is by showing appreciation. We want to recognize Sherwin-Williams, a store that's been in the community for about 40 years, and they have four employees currently. But we received word of great customer service, excellent customer service, and really helpful staff. And when we get those kinds of recommendations, we want to make that public. So I want to thank Brett and his staff for serving our community so well. And I wanted him to have a few moments to share what he would like to say about Sherwin-Williams.
So I learned from becoming, you know, the part-timer, just, yes, greet, always smile. And I kind of took that in and brought it up all the way up to be a store manager. So I started in Tyler and ended up here with my family. So I've created a staff that's always, I've trained them and helped them grow. But you are, you are what make us a business, more helpful. Yes, I play a business part as the manager, the business operator. But again, I'm, I'm here to serve our community, here to make us look better as in color. Give it life. That's what our model is, color to the earth. Anything you need, and I've helped Rob since I was an assistant manager here. Officers been in the city with the tanks and projects. So I'm your guy for product knowledge. I have multiple employees that know ins and outs of tanks. So if y'all have any questions or y'all need anything, you know, don't hesitate to come ask us. We're, we're here. We'll help you with the project.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Our next item is our proclamation for our National Night Out that's coming up. So Chief, will you join us?
Brought some brass with him.
This is a proclamation for our National Night Out 2025. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch sponsors a national community building campaign on Tuesday, October 7, 2025, entitled National Night Out. And whereas the National Night Out campaign provides an opportunity for neighbors in the city of Jacksonville to join over 38 million neighbors across 17,000 communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, and military bases worldwide. Whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes strong police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live and work. And whereas neighbors in Jacksonville assist the law, the local law enforcement agency through a joint community building efforts and support National Night Out 2025. And whereas it is essential that all neighbors of Jacksonville come together with police and work together to build a safer, more caring community. And now therefore, I, Rainey Gore, Mayor, do hereby call upon all neighbors of Jacksonville to join the Police Department and National Association of Town Watch in support for National Night Out on Tuesday, October 7, 2025. And further let it be resolved that I, Mayor Rainey Gore, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 7, 2025, as National Night Out in Jacksonville. Thank you very much. Our next item is our citizen's participation. This is where we set aside some time to hear concerns from our citizens. It's not a dialogue. We just want to listen to information that they may want to provide for us. We have one tonight that has filled out a comment card, and it's Peggy Alexander. So if you want to come to the podium and speak, that would be great. Please limit your comments to about three minutes.
Okay.
That'd be great. And we'll listen intently for three minutes. Thank you. If you'll just state your name and address, that'd be great.
Okay. My name is Peggy Alexander. I live at 809 Howard Street. I'm sure some of you are remembering the problem that we're having. And I, we all thought it was taken care of, but it's not. The problem has come back again. And we have a, we have a problem with potholes and stuff on the 800 block all the way down the street and water stands in the holes. And I don't know what it would take to fix, you know, the, what causes all the flooding in people houses over there. But if someone could take a look at it and possibly figure it out, we would be happy.
Thank you. Thank you. 809 Howard.
Howard.
I'm kind of behind, like, Scooters, coffee.
That's what I, yeah.
Cars in the X area.
Yeah.
Who is the, oh, precinct, who's the person that's over that part of town?
Randall Chandler.
Oh. The, the city council person for that district.
That would be, be mine. That would be my area, my, my part of town.
You miss the going.
Going. Yes, ma'am. You can find me, find me at the restaurant.
Thanks for your comment.
Or they'll get you my numbers.
Anyone else that wanted to address the council that didn't fill out a sheet? Okay. Item number seven is our consent agenda. Under this, the consent agenda requires little or no deliberations. We have minutes approval, a couple of street closures. I think our manager wanted to speak just briefly about item H. Is that okay, Jen?
Yes, Mayor, City Council, in your package, item H, approve the sale of the 2020 Vector truck. It alludes to utilizing the online platform GovDeals. It's an online auction clearinghouse. We've had great success using it in the past, but we've also had good success utilizing interlocal agreements to sell items to other municipalities or counties. There has been another Texas city that has reached out directly to us, interested in purchasing the 2020 Vector. We'd like the opportunity to at least explore that with them. If we feel like we can come to a sales agreement that's in both their benefit and ours as well, based on the fees that we would be paying to GovDeals, we'd like to bring an ILA before the council in October.
So hearing that, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent.
I have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen. Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallick. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number eight is any action out of executive session, and I think we have two.
We have two.
Okay.
I make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into a lease agreement for about 45 acres adjacent to the current landfill.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilwoman.
To Republic Services.
To Republic Services.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gallick.
Second.
And a second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. One more?
Yes, one more. Authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into a license agreement with Mason Turner for the use of an existing roadway located on city-owned property off of 30, County Road 3108.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gallick, second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray. Any discussion on that item? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing those two motions, carry out of executive session. If you will indulge me, I would like to move items 13 and 14 up. Just for the sake of time, I think we have some people here that have other obligations elsewhere. So we'll scoot and go to item 13, discuss and consider approval of a habitable structure located at 2534 Bird Road, Jacksonville, Texas.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, the first slide before you there pertains to both of these items. They were both noticed as public hearings in the Jacksonville progress. And those public hearings were conducted as part of the Lake Advisory Board meeting held here at City Hall on August 28. Letters were also sent on both of these requests to the adjacent property owners on either side of both subject properties. The first one for discussion tonight is a request at the address of 2534 Bird Road. I believe the applicants, the Owens, are here this evening if you should have any questions that I don't address. They are seeking approval to build a habitable structure on land. And you see there, Section 9 of the Lake Rules and Regulations does allow for this on lots that are at least 5,000 square feet, which theirs is. Action taken out of the Lake Advisory Board resulted in a 6O recommendation for approval. Everybody in attendance was in support of this request, with one member being absent. Here's an aerial image of the property identifying, identifying it as approximately 7,600 square feet there on Bird Road. The structure you see there on the right side, if you will, or the south side of that yellow box is seen here from the road. It is a garage that had been previously been authorized to be built on land. And then the carport extension had been permitted as well. The applicant is now looking to enclose and improve the carport to be guest living quarters. And again, the request was recommended for approval by the Lake Advisory Board unanimously at the August 28 meeting.
Okay. So you've heard that explanation from James. All that entertain a motion on that item.
I make a motion to approve the request.
Have a motion by Tim McGray. Is he here? Second.
I'll second.
That was second by Councilwoman Rob Goen. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you, Councilwoman Titty Horse. She would, she had car issues and got stuck in White House. And that's due to her delay, but she got here, so I appreciate it.
Fun times. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. The next item is number 14, discuss and consider approval of a variance of the Lake Jacksonville Rules and Regulations for a habitable structure located over the water of Lake Jacksonville at 929 County Road 3131, Jacksonville, Texas.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, the applicants are here for this item as well. This is almost the inverse of what we just asked you to consider. This is to build a habitable structure over water. Currently, by right, those are allowed in the concession neighborhood and allowed elsewhere by variance. Council did approve a very similar variance on Valentine's Day of 2023 on a property also located in the county, in the Cat Creek area, for a habitable structure over the water. You'll see there the action recommendation from the Lake Advisory Board. Also, at the meeting held on the 28th of August was five to one, with again, the one absentee member. I'll say too, that on both of these items, I know we've already taken action on one, but on both of them, nobody spoke in the public hearing, and nobody came out against or submitted any kind of letters or phone calls of concern on either of these items. Here's a look at the existing dock that extends out into the water from the subject property as well. It extends roughly probably 75 to 90 feet out into the water. Of course, in the Lake Rules and Regulations, the property owner does have the ability to improve and expand upon the existing footprint of that dock out into the water. So that's a part of this clarifying request as well. This is the structure that they anticipate building. It's been already designed, and we'll get to a survey here in a moment. Excuse me, I don't know the exact square footage, but it does include the habitable elements of a bedroom and restroom facility. Here's a survey. This was not available at the time of the Lake Advisory Board meeting, but I think it had really no bearing. But I think it gives you a good idea that the property kind of sits within a cove of the cove, if you will. And so the structure that the applicant is looking to build, you know, doesn't raise a lot of concerns for neighboring properties as it pertains to sightlines. Those are the slides I prepared. Any other questions, I'll do my best to answer, or the applicant can.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion, and then the group will discuss as necessary.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance at 929 County Road 3131 for a habitable.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any discussion?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you. Right now, we'll go back to item number nine, which is a public hearing to hear and receive input regarding the proposed 2025-2026 budget. Were you going to talk a little bit before we open the public?
I will gladly do that, Mayor, sorry I was getting squared away there.
No, that's fine. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Okay. Mayor, I'll make some comments pertinent to items nine and 10. And that way, when we open the public hearings, anybody who's interested in speaking that's kind of heard both the rate side and the budget side. Council, just want to thank you for all your time you've invested in this budget. You've put a lot of hours into reviewing it, both at your homes and with our budget team and our leadership team at the city. The majority of that taking place as your budget workshop on August 8th held there at the Public Safety Complex. This year, staff really organized the budget presentation into the categories of people, programs, equipment, projects, and planning. This evening, I'll walk you through each of those elements at a very high level, primarily relating to any kind of changes we've made, service level enhancements or otherwise, as compared to the current budget. Before we jump into those particular categories, though, I want to take a look at the tax rate and the net taxable assessed value that the city has here. You'll see that in 2024, on the slide, our net taxable value was at $1,399,000,000. It has increased 5.26%, or roughly $54,000,000 to $1,949,000,000. We did build this budget on a flat tax rate of 63763, so applying that flat tax rate to the new net taxable assessed value, you, we would yield an additional revenue from property taxes at $343,416,000. Looking at the tax rates that the city kind of had as it, at its disposal, many cities have kind of three that they work with, and we benefit from what's also called the de minimis rate there on the far right-hand side of the screen. That's at our, um, disposal based on our population. However, again, uh, as highlighted on the screen there in yellow or outlined in yellow, we are proposing a budget built on a flat tax rate of six-three-seven-six-three cents. When you apply our, um, basically our collections rate at ninety-eight point five percent, we would anticipate a revenue of roughly six point eight million dollars, again citing that three hundred and forty-three thousand dollar increase as compared to the prior year. Um, you see the other tax rates and their potential effect on revenue to the city there on the screen. One cent on the tax rate, uh, just kind of a little factoid, generally results in about a hundred and seven thousand dollars in revenue to the city. Taking a look at the ad valorem tax rate history, you see kind of a little peak there at sixty-nine cents flat from years fiscal year nineteen to fiscal year twenty-one. Since that time, we've been bringing it down as the valuations have gone up, uh, again recommending flat for the current year. The proposed year, rather. Here's where the rubber meets the road for the rooftops, if you will. In many cases, uh, not every case, it's all dependent on your individual property, but as a whole, the average, uh, homestead increased from a value of a hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred dollars to a value of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand four hundred and five dollars, or eight point seven-nine percent. When you apply the consistent tax rate from the current year to the proposed year, that's going to result in a tax bill exactly eight point seven-nine percent more than the current year. So it would raise a bill from nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and six cents for all city services for one year to one thousand and seventy-three dollars and eighty cents, or eighty-six dollars and seventy-four cents per year. That does provide police, fire, and EMS services, streets, library, parks, animal control, code enforcement administration, development services, and many other things that we offer our residents in terms of governmental services. Sales tax, uh, we are budgeting for a growth of about three point six-seven percent, moving from a projected end in fiscal year twenty-five of roughly three point five million to a proposed budget of, uh, almost three point seven million dollars. This is really nice, because if you think back to that value of the penny on the tax rate, when you see this increase, a couple hundred thousand dollars, you can think of that as a couple pennies that we're able to take off the property tax rate or hold off the property tax rate and bring that in via sales tax. I will say that we spent quite a bit of time talking about sales tax, both at the property, excuse me, both at the, um, budget workshop and our most recent agenda workshop. We've engaged a sales tax consultant to kind of look at collections and audit comptroller data, as well as do some analysis, some leakage analysis, to see how we can go about trying to improve the sales tax revenue, again, to mitigate, um, the impact on property taxes here within the community. We think we'll have some opportunities, and it can help refine and hone strategies, both from the city and from the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation. We do lag quite a bit in sales tax collections as compared to many of our, um, comparator cities within the region of similar population, and so we want to put our, our finger on that and do the best we can for our residents to offer them the services that they want here in Jacksonville, and also takes the pressure off again, property taxes. There are three funds with mandated fund balance policies, and so these are the three I'll spend just a moment touching on, just to give you kind of an idea of their relative strength and health. The first is the general fund. Its, uh, fund balance policy requirement, it provides a range of fifteen to twenty percent of operating expenditures as its, uh, intended fund balance. It has a proposed ending balance, uh, as, as in the FY twenty-six budget of five point four million dollars, with a target balance, that twenty percent being at three point two million dollars, so we show to be over target by two point two million dollars, roughly thirteen and a half percent over that twenty percent, um, you know, fund balance policy requirement. The debt service fund essentially just needs to have a fund balance, uh, able to service the debt. Clearly, that, that it is, uh, carrying, proposed end balance with the FY twenty-six budget of three seventy-eight, a target balance of two twenty-eight, so we have a cushion of about a hundred and a half there, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then in the utility fund, our policy requirement is ninety days operating expenditures. We show to have an ending, uh, balance at a hundred and twenty-one days, or thirty-one days, over that operating expenditure balance um, of unreserved funds. Um, it's, it's easy to look there and see that we're over target by thirteen million dollars, but largely those are, not largely, those are bond funds that are going to be spent on projects. And so when we look at our unreserved funds, we have that thirty-one day cushion over and above the ninety-day fund balance policy. This is for all funds, and I'm sorry, we're getting some glare, so I hope you can see, but this is a, a snapshot of all funds by category, kind of what drove any changes. You see the top line there, and we'll dig into this in, uh, some coming slides, but employee services is up roughly six and a half percent, or seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Uh, moving down that list, most of the numbers are kind of inconsequential. When you look at, the percentage may be high, but when you look at the, the dollars there, they're relatively low. Services, things are costing us more, just like households for getting plumbers to come out or pay for insurance. Those are the things wrapped up in that services line item, so you see a relatively healthy increase in that. Largely, that's what's driving that. And then capital expenditures, um, you see a decline of fourteen million dollars. That is not that we're not going to do projects we've committed to do. What we're doing is trying to budget how much of each project we're going to do in that respective fiscal year. So if it's a five-year project and it was thirty million dollars, maybe one year we get five million done, and the next year we get ten million done. But when you pack it all into one year, like you're going to accomplish a multi-year project in one year, it really skews the numbers. So this is kind of a course correction for that. All that money will still be reinvested. We're just trying to program the money out, uh, in a reasonable timeline. So again, we'll jump into those categories. On the people category, this budget does include the addition of one additional position. That's across the board in totality, talking about seasonal, part-time, or full-time. One additional position, and that is, uh, that of a police officer that will be dedicated to traffic. So that was a request that clearly came out of the police department. We appreciate that. There were numerous other requests from different departments, but as we sit around the table as staff, and when we get the council involved, um, this was the one that kind of rose to the top, um, a- as the city there. Funds for the, it just does continue to fund our public safety step plans. As you recall, that's kind of the program in which, um, based on the number of years of service, every couple of years, depending whether you're on the fire scale or the police's scale, this is very common, um, throughout the state, there's kind of built-in, um, compensation changes, if you will. It also authorizes the fire department to reclass three existing positions to the captain rank, so it's not new positions. It's not new FTEs, but it's reclassing positions to really bring some continuity between operations at Station One on Bolton and Station Two on the Loop. It's across the board, two percent pay increases for staff. It does raise our starting pay for full-time positions to fifteen dollars an hour. Roughly, right now, for full-time positions, we have some in the thirteen ninety range, and so this is about a dollar ten. If that jump from the current rate to the fifteen brings them beyond what a two percent raise would have, that is inclusive of the two percent, uh, raise there. But that's, I think, a really great step in the right direction as it pertains to living wages. TMRS enhancement for our folks. This is in alignment with our comparator cities at a seven percent employer contribution rate. This is a, a really big move for retention, um, and recruitment, uh, here with the city. Uh, TMRS is now authorized up to an eight percent, um, employer contribution rate, so this would move us from six to seven. The city moved from five to six back in two thousand and seven. This does also include funding to sponsor, uh, and an employer sponsored, rather, offer or extend a short-term disability coverage. This is transitioning away from our in-house program, which we, uh, often refer to as the sick bank, over to, if you will, a third-party short-term disability coverage. The coverages are slightly different, but it will provide, um, a good, a good benefit to our employees. And then continued healthcare coverage, uh, with the same plan design as last year, so the staff would anticipate staying with Blue Cross Blue Shield, uh, with the employees being covered, uh, at one hundred percent, and then their dependents being subject to the rates based on the plan design they choose, at zero percent covered by the city. Kind of two programs to call your attention to. I would consider these, um, certainly enhancements. Uh, one, to just tell our people what we're doing and get an increased, uh, citizen engagement. Few months ago, probably, uh, half a year or so ago, JEDCO engaged a local, uh, marketing and communications firm, Creation Branding here in Jacksonville. I hope that you've noticed the significant uptick in, uh, information they've been putting out, especially video content. That's something we're looking to have done with the city. It does come at a cost of, uh, thirty-six thousand dollars per year to be split, uh, evenly, twelve thousand apiece between the utility, the hotel occupancy, and the general fund. And then on the fleet management side, we would be extending GPS real-time tracking, diagnostics, cost analysis, safe driving alerts, fuel efficiency alerts, um, to our fleet. Seventy-five pieces of equipment and, uh, motor vehicles in the fleet. So this is a, a cost savings as well as a liability, um, thing. It's, it's, uh, we were without a fleet manager here at the city, so every time we want to know the mileage on pieces of equipment, somebody has to go out there to each one, put a key in, and get the mileage and come back. Every time, you know, somebody gets an oil change, hopefully they're putting that somewhere that we can find it. So this is really a step in the right direction at relatively a pretty low cost for the amount of pieces of equipment we'll be tracking. That too would be split, uh, roughly seventeen thousand to the general fund and two thousand to the utility fund. Moving along to equipment, uh, of course, a few years ago, the city council did establish the Vehicle Equipment and Replacement Fund. We call that the VERF. It's allowed us to start cash paying for a lot of pieces of equipment that I think previously we would have done a lease purchase agreements on, or potentially even long-term finance agreements on. You see here on the screen the pieces of equipment that this budget funds. In almost every case, there's an outgoing piece of equipment that has, uh, served its useful life, and we'll be taking it to public auction to dispose ourselves of that. Um, of note, our two additional police interceptors, that's part of our fleet replacement program, an additional ambulance, a replacing, not an additional ambulance, excuse me, the replacement of an ambulance, uh, the replacement of a fire department command vehicle, new extrication tools for the fire department. Um, oftentimes, you hear those referred to as JAWS. That's what is, um, used to extricate individuals from maybe motor vehicles that are involved in, um, you know, significant traffic, um, collisions, and so we're using some pretty antiquated, uh, instruments, and we really want to see that improved, especially with the amount of state highways we have here in town. A new Mini-X mower and a pressure washing trailer, and then on the utility fund side, two new three-quarter ton service body trucks. Projects, we talked a little bit about that fourteen million dollar swing there when we talked about projects, but I can assure you, there's a lot of money being spent on projects. Here's the list, um, of projects that we anticipate some really significant, um, progress on in fiscal year twenty-six, which of course starts this October. Uh, some renovations to Fire Station Two on the Loop, just to improve its, uh, the living quarters and conditions for the firefighters that call that home. Canada Street between South Bolton or FM three forty-seven and US sixty-nine or South Jackson. Uh, we anticipate a lot of progress on that. Hopefully, here in the next coming months, we'll be bidding that project out and getting dirt turned, and, uh, hopefully see a really nice new complete street project there. Concrete streets, new water and sewer lines, as well as a sidewalk on the south side. We also have some additional monies, about a million dollars earmarked for other streets. We're not really releasing what those streets will be until we bid out Canada and know, and know exactly what remains in the pot to spread across the city. Lakeshore Bridge enhancements, it's, uh, suffered some, uh, just some damage with some of the rain events we've had recently. Uh, rehabilitation to our elevated storage tank or our water tower there on North Bolton. Nichols Green infill and infiltration, that has to do with, uh, sanitary sewer. And then two more sanitary sewer projects there that we've been talking about for some time. The trunk line that extends from South Bolton across to, um, across a bunch of property, kind of south there on Tina, south of Tina Street, over into the Nichols Green Park area, and then, um, some significant planning work toward doubling the size of the wastewater treatment plant, which is, as you may not know, uh, quite a few miles down Highway two oh four as you exit town. On our planning, the planning side of what we have in the budget, we have, uh, funds earmarked for Parks and Rec Master Plan, our current master plan. Uh, I hate to even call it current, but our latest master plan is from two thousand and fourteen at this point. When you get beyond ten years or right at that ten-year threshold, you start to lose eligibility, uh, utilizing it to leverage grant dollars and apply for grants, so we're looking to brush that up. JEDCO has, um, very generously pulled alongside the city and, um, offered to at least match or potentially more than match, um, our commitment to getting that done. We've actually already started some discussions on, on trying to make that happen in a timely fashion, so that next budget year, we already have that document, uh, able to guide the budget process as it pertains to the parks. Water and wastewater master plan, look forward to working with Randall and an outside engineering firm on just making sure that we're taking care of looking toward the future of water and wastewater here in the community, whether that's surface water treatment, regional water treatment, detention, uh, wells, all the different facets of the infrastructure that play a role in us having clean and quality drinking water here in town is going to be under the microscope, um, in the next couple of months. Council has already authorized, uh, some building code updates. We'll be getting additional information out on that soon, but this earmark is kind of the second, uh, half of that effort, or roughly forty percent of that effort, if you will. This is an opportunity to brush up our two thousand and eight building codes, two thousand and six building codes to either twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty-four, so increasing the quality of development in town from the international fire code standpoint, electrical code, building code, energy code, all these things. Making sure that, uh, when things are constructed, they're, um, sensical, but also extremely safe and efficient. And we do have an additional hundred thousand dollars plugged into the budget this year for, uh, contract engineering services. We do not have an in-house engineer, and so we rely heavily on third-party engineers. This just gives us a little bit more gas in the tank, if you will, when we're talking about drainage issues throughout town, and stormwater drainage, to get some technical expertise, some boots on the grounds, uh, on the ground to evaluate systems on kind of an ad hoc basis for us. So that is what I have for you in terms of the budget presentation. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Good. Anybody have any questions at this point?
I've, I've just had a couple of questions. First off, just want to say thank y'all so much for waiting for me.
Sure.
For, for skipping over this in the agenda, so I really appreciate that. Um, and I can't believe I've never asked this question before, but the mandated fund balance policy, is that, who sets that? Is that set by us, or is that set legislatively?
It's, it's you all.
Okay. When was the last time we reviewed that?
It's annually, I believe. It's not?
Um, we redid, we re-approved our financial policies at the beginning of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget process.
Okay.
That's the last time they were under the microscope.
Hmm.
But we did change our fund balance policy.
Okay.
We did or did not, I'm sorry?
Did not.
Did not, okay.
Yeah, okay.
And for those that maybe not understand fund ba- fund accounting, fund balance is kind of like savings account. It's kind of like your reserves.
Yeah.
So, just another name, in general terms. Any others? Okay, well, I, at this point, I'll open up a public hearing to hear and receive citizen input regarding the proposed budget for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. So if anybody would like to speak in favor of or against, now would be your time to speak. Seeing or hearing none, I will close that portion of the public hearing and go to discuss and consider possible action of an ordinance adopting the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget. So I will entertain a motion on that.
I'll move that we, uh, adopt an ordinance, uh, accepting the twenty-five, twenty-six budget as presented by staff.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallick. Any discussion that we might need? If not, we need to take a recorded vote for each council member, so, uh, Councilman Rob Goen.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray.
Aye.
Mayor Randy Gorn, yes. Councilwoman Latitia Horace.
Yes.
And Councilwoman La- uh, Mindy Gallick.
Yes.
There we have five yeses, zero nays. That passes. Our next item, I will open up a public hearing to receive and discuss, uh, citizen input regarding a proposed tax rate of zero point six-three-seven-six-three-zero for one hundred dollar valuation. So if anybody would like to speak in favor of or against, now's your time. Here in the public hearing. Hearing or seeing none, I will close that portion of the public hearing and go to item B is to discuss and possible action approving an ordinance adopting the tax rate for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six fiscal budget year. I'll entertain a motion.
I have one here.
Okay.
Are we, which number are we using?
Whichever one we decide to vote on.
The.
Whatever the motion might be, so. You want to make a motion?
I want to make a motion.
Okay, make a motion, and we'll discuss.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point six-three-seven-six-three-zero, which is effectively a five point six-eight percent increase in the tax rate. This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate. The tax rate will effectively be raised by seven point four-two percent and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a one hundred thousand dollar home by approximately thirty-four dollars. thirty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Okay. Heard that motion?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any discussion on that motion? And I think that's the tax rate we built the budget on.
It is, but then we have the other, the point.
Yeah.
Six-four, or whatever it was that left us a little bit more.
Yeah.
Balance at the end of everything.
Yeah, but we have tons of fund balance.
We do, we do, we do, yeah. And we've got plenty of money in the bank.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Oh, no, no. Pardon, that's right. We have to have a roll vote.
Yes.
Councilman Rob Goen.
Yes.
Councilman Tim McGray.
Yes.
Mayor Randy Goran, yes. Councilwoman Latitia Horace.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Mindy Gellit.
Yes.
Okay, we have five yeses, zero nays, so that tax rate passed. Item number eleven is to discuss and consider action on an ordinance regulating alcoholic beverages at city parks.
Yes, mayor, city council on the upper hand half of that screen, you should see the current version of section thirteen-ten related to alcoholic beverages inside of parks. A and B both speak to parks, whether they're inside or outside of the city limits, and then, excuse me, they're all A there, but A one, A two do, and then the third A on that screen refers to the consumption or the possession of alcohol basically on or nearly Jacksonville. What's, staff brought this to your attention, I just want to make clear, no council member asked us to bring this to your attention. This was staff initiated. Based on the fact that many of the recent community gatherings, sesquicentennial barbecue events, car shows, all different kinds of events we've been having downtown, we have generally implemented the allowance for alcohol, and we've done that underneath this section here related to outside consumption. You see that B two, at a public event, which if the city council generally gives approval and that we give authorized written notice to the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission, their alcohol can be present. So this, again, Tomato Fest, some of these events are hosted by the city, some of these events are supported by the city, and some of the events the city may close the road, and that's about the extent of it. We have not had any issues extend from the presence of alcohol at these events. Even if alcohol is there in an allowable form, there is still public intoxication and other state laws that apply should somebody or individual or individuals get out of hand. But we were bringing this item before you this evening with everything going on over there at Hazel Tilted Park and the erection of the new stage and some of the concerts we want to have out there and the public gatherings. Several of the events that have been held downtown that have had alcohol present, I'm going to say, i.e. the barbecue event, they are interested in coming over to the park, but that is part of the event that they would like to continue, and, and so staff is just bringing that to council's attention to see if you would be in support of the proposed language at which, or in which I can authorize somebody to have or possess alcohol in a park, provided they get written permission from me. And we can set in the future those conditions that you allow me to have that authority, and it does specify that for the purposes of this ordinance, the body of water that is like Jacksonville would not be considered a city park.
Okay. All right, so we've heard that, I will entertain a motion on that item.
I'll make a motion that we approve a new ordinance regulating alcoholic beverages at our city park.
We have a motion with Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray. Any discussion, concerns anyone may have? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number twelve is to discuss and consider with possible action a resolution nominating five new board members to the Cherokee County or Cherokee Central Appraisal District.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, mayor, city council, you see on the upper hand half of the screen there, straight from the Central Appraisal District's website, kind of what this board is responsible for and what they do. Generally, they hire and fire the chief appraiser, and then they have roles to play in review of the budget. However, they do have no authority to set values or appraisal methods, and so I just wanted, I do want to make that clear. You see the current roster of board members there on the screen. This comes about every two years with all the members, they're not staggered terms, so all five positions will be subject to renomination and election. In October of two thousand and twenty-three, the city, city council did cast all their votes for Leanne Kendall Owlsley, who they had previously nominated to serve on the CCAT board. Ms. Kendall Owlsley has decided not to seek reelection, and so she would not be a particularly good nomination this evening in light of that information she has offered. But here's the process, the nomination deadline, the deadline that I had to provide the chief appraiser, your listed nominees is by October fifteenth. So I will say that should you need some more time on this, we could in theory take action at your October fourteenth city council meeting, but this year, subject to new state law, a signed nominee statement has to be furnished by that deadline as well, and that's something that the nominee themselves have to review and sign, and so making that all happen between the fourteenth and the fifteenth could present some challenges. So if we're able to tonight, we can make up to five nominations, you're not required to make any, and you can make one, but you can make up to five. Those names then get placed on the ballot, and the election would take place via an ordinance that you all act on in terms of casting your four hundred and sixty-seven ballots. Here's the requirements, the eligibility requirements to serve on the board related to how long they have to have lived in the county and what entities they cannot work for, their tax status in terms of not being delinquent, things of that nature, and then you see here all the taxing entities that provide nominees and then ultimately vote on the list of nominees, and how many ballots they have, and the number of allocated votes is determined by essentially your pro-rata share of the total levy, property tax levy in the entirety of the county. We, I believe, have the fourth most in terms of total ballots to cast, lagging both Cherokee County, GAIST, and Bullard ISD.
Good. So councillor, would this be appropriate to just offer, ask for nominations?
Certainly.
Okay, so would anybody have a nomination that they would like to put forward?
Well, Mike McEwen's not here, let's choose him.
That'd be good.
I have not talked to Mike either, so I really, I mean, this one's been tough, because I don't know of any, any outs, there's plenty of outstanding people.
He would probably do it.
I bet he would.
I mean, that's, that's a thought of somebody who's relevant in that industry.
What we're doing now, these nominations are what will go.
On the ballot.
On the ballot. But have, but in the past, haven't we put, tried to put all of our votes behind one person to try to build?
Yeah, we have, we have.
So is that what you would need tonight, is just if we nominate, we re-on, re-on eight person? If, if that's what we want to do, I realize you could have every council person could put a nomination, but.
There's no consensus between, you know, I've reached out to some county leadership, I've reached out to some school district, nobody has a name that I've, that I've identified.
I'd be good with Mike, and I bet he would do it.
Yeah.
I, I called Robert Haberly.
Yeah.
And he spent some time actually reading the rules, and he said he would be happy to serve if that's what we would want to do.
Well, that's a contention.
He might be a good one.
If he's already said that, then.
So unless anybody else has one.
I've got no objection to Robert.
The one I identified declined, so.
Probably not politely.
No, it's rather polite.
So, yeah, and, and Robert said, hey, put me on the ballot, if I'm a good loser, if I get beat, I get beat, but I would be happy to try to serve the council, so.
He would be good.
Yeah. And we know he's willing. Mike would be good, but we're not sure.
Exactly.
I think he's having a heart procedure today in the hospital.
Okay.
Well, you know, Robert's studious, I mean, he's gonna, he's gonna do a good job for you.
I think he will, so.
And nothing precludes us from coming back on October fourteenth.
Do you need a motion?
Adding to our list, does it?
Well, this is in the form of a resolution, my submittal to the county, I don't know if we can do a second one or like an amending resolution if you want to add somebody on the fourteenth, but I would at least get this one submitted.
So what do you, what do you need?
I guess we would need.
A motion for.
Got a motion and then a vote.
To submit Robert Haberly to be placed on a nomination on the ballot.
But are we going, do we need to nominate Tony Johnson?
See, I wouldn't, I'd probably go senior.
Do we need to nominate?
No, no, I don't think so.
Now, there's five people rolling on.
I would make a motion that we singularly nominate Robert Haberly for casting, or a single nomination for the city of Jacksonville.
Okay, so I have a motion.
I'll second that.
By Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray, second by Councilman Rob Goen, to place as our nominee, Robert Haberly, to serve on the CAT's board.
Perfect.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries.
We will, we'll vote at a future meeting once they establish the ballot.
Okay. We've already handled the previous, the next two. Item number fifteen, to discuss and consider a possible action of resolution of the city council of the city of Jacksonville pursuant to chapter nineteen, article seven, section nineteen dash one nine-three of the Code of Ordinances, amending to delete resolution oh-two dash two oh-two-one dash five in its present form and replace this resolution designating a portion of Nakadoshia Street as a no parking zone.
Justin said read it all again, he could.
Discussing.
Little louder.
Little louder.
That's a mouthful, thank you so much for reading.
Good for the record.
In simple terms, what this does, mayor and city council is, would essentially repeal a large part of the action taken pursuant to the approval of resolution oh-two twenty twenty-one oh-five, which authorized the closure of Natchez Street from seventy-nine to El Paso and Nakadoshia Street from sixty-nine to Natchez to parking vehicles on both sides of those streets, whether it be the easterly, westerly, northerly, sou, southerly. And so what this does would return parking to be allowed on the section of Natchez Street from seventy-nine all the way down to El Paso. You'll see there the bold red lines and then the dashed red lines kind of at that northern section of Natchez Street. The northern section, while it was authorized to be closed to parking on both sides, it was never signed that way or enforced that way, staff kind of took a little bit of discretion. This was all done when the old library was redeveloped to become Chick-fil-A, just as a preemptive effort to make sure we didn't run into vehicle safety issues or any kind of congestion in the area. Staffs reviewed it from a public safety response standpoint and public utility standpoint and sees no issue with reopening that section of Natchez Street. We would recommend that the section of Nakadoshia Street between sixty-nine and Natchez remain closed to parking. You have exits from both McDonald's and Chick-fil-A and the, I believe, the radio station there, and there's just too many driveways to make that safe. I will say that in my time serving as the manager, only one person has spoken to me about this, and she was advocating for it to be reopened to parking on both sides. I checked in with her recently just to see if that was still her position. Her and her husband own an apartment complex that fronts Natchez Street, and they were in support of, of this item.
Okay, so you've heard that explanation, I will entertain a motion.
Well, make a motion that we do whatever you read so longly about, and.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
That we go back to the parking or whatever on that, that area of street, yeah.
Okay, is that good enough, councillor?
Or do I need to read the whole thing?
No, you don't.
Oh, thank you.
On Natchez Street.
Natchez Street.
On Natchez Street, yeah.
I'll second it.
We have a second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray, any discussion needed? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Once we pull those signs up, we shouldn't have to buy any more signs for class.
No.
There's plenty of them there, that's great. All right, number sixteen, open forum for mayor and council. Anybody have anything? Burning their saddle or something good to talk about? Nothing? All right, we'll go to seventeen, city managers report.
Yeah, very well, I just called some additional tensions on National Night Out, wonderful resolution, thanks to all the police officers who came out this evening and supported that. You know, oftentimes, I think it's easy to think that National Night Out's just on October seventh, but there's a lot of lead into it, it's really a year-long campaign between working with the schools, getting the sponsors, pulling the community together, so I want to thank Amanda for that, and everybody involved, the community just really comes out to support the men and women in blue in this community. One of the lead-up events, it's far from the only, but one of the lead-up events to the National Night Out is Coffee with the National Night Out mascot Nat, and that takes place Tuesday, September sixteenth from eight to nine there at Starbucks. But there's many other things going on, so pay attention to Facebook feeds and the police department's Facebook page and things of that nature, but look forward to seeing the community out in strong support on October seventh. A few of us will at least start the evening off at a zoning board adjustment meeting to be held on Tuesday, October seventh. I don't often highlight public meetings that are going to be held in the future, but this is one that has been a real priority of your city council and your staff, and I think of your community, is just to clean up the town. We've made major strides in the removal of substandard structures in the last three to five years. I think we've removed somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty structures, so I can't wait till we get to a hundred. I don't know that we'll get there based on the results of this meeting. I don't serve on the zoning board of adjustment, but I do believe there'll be about sixteen structures potentially on the agenda that can ebb and flow, but right now, looking at about sixteen structures for the zoning board of adjustment to consider. Again, it's a public hearing, clearly the property owners are notified of this, and so things can change, but we wanted to get that held very early into the fiscal year so that we can bid out these projects and use the funds that the community authorizes for this effort. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank JEDCO. JEDCO has really poured the gasoline on this fire, if you will, they've pretty much doubled, yeah, too, too soon.
Deuce, the deuce.
Yeah, they, you know, doubled, doubled our, our reach, and so we're thankful for that, JEDCO. That's all I had.
That it?
Yes.
Diesel, diesel.
Okay, well, being six fifty-six, we will stand in charge, thanks for coming.
Okay, that was good, appreciate it.
Well, yeah, I'm here now.
We do not advocate throwing grass on the side.